Okay, we'll go again. Let's start on tonight and we'll, we'll start with prayer. Heavenly Father, Lord God, we come before you on this evening. We come heavenly Father, studying your word. And heavenly Father, we come depending and leaning on you that you will give us the understanding that you want us to have. We pray heavenly Father, that you let your Holy Spirit flow from heart to heart and mind to mind. And heavenly Father, that we might be conditioned and that we might be humble enough to receive your word and receive it on good ground. We want to tell you thank you. We ask that your blessings flow on those that are on the call. And heavenly Father, those that wants to be on the call, we thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Alright, so we'll begin, start it here and I, I was not on last week, but Pastor Cole before me and and so I'm, I'm, anybody wanna kind of give highlights, a little background or talk about some of the things that you dealt with on last week? Okay, so, and I know last week he was dealing between verse, in chapter twenty, he was dealing with verses twenty-seven to forty-seven. And basically, those we're dealing with, you know, as we know, Jesus only have a few more days here at this time left on earth. So he's trying to, he's trying to ratchet it up. He trying to tighten up the, the teaching and the training so that, you know, because he know he's about to be leaving. And he want his disciples and the people to be prepared to take this thing on and, and, and to go with it. And so, not only was he tightening up his ministry, turning the heat up on, on his ministry, where you had those that were against him, they've turned the heat up on trying to trap him and, and kill him as well. And, you know, so they're trying to trick him with questions, you know. So as we could see that, you know, the Pharisees and Sadducees, you know, they were having a hard time, so they just, they just sent people to him, asking the questions, you know, questions about marriage and dying and marrying, uh, you know, the surviving spouse marrying again and, you know, whenever they die, who's wife or husband they're gonna be when in resurrection. So they, they're just asking them things, trying to trap him up in his words. But, you know, the, the, the word is Jesus. And so, you know, it's kind of hard to trap the word with the word. And then Jesus, he also, you know, talk about, because you know, he always referred himself as the, the, the son of man. Or, you know, as they would refer to him as son of David, you know, so he asked question. You know, if he's the son of David, how then was David? Actually, you know, what David said in the book of Psalms, Psalms, you know, the Lord said, "My Lord, sit on my right hand until I make your enemies a footstool for your feet." You know, so, and, and this is, this is actually Psalms that David wrote. And so, he, you know, he asked the question, David calls him Lord, how then can he be his son? So he's, he's, he's throwing these things out there, he's saying these things, but a lot of the people not understanding what he's saying. But, a lot of the things that Jesus taught and said, man couldn't understand at that time. It took his death and resurrection and the Holy Spirit coming on the scene so that it can give an interpretation so that people can under- understand some of the things that, you know, some, basically it's some of the seed that he sowed and people were able to see some of the harvest from it. And so, you know, and then Jesus, he talking to his disciples, mortaring them against it, you know, the teachers of the law. And so basically, he telling them to be aware of the teachers of law. They like to walk around in flowing robes and love to be greeted with respect in the marketplaces and have most important seats in the synagogues and the places of honor at banquet. They devour widows' houses for a show, making lengthy prayer. These men will be punished most severely. So Jesus saying, you know, they come, they got, they make a good show, but they don't have no content, basically. You know, they, they, you know, they, 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 the biggest thing with them too is they wanna, you know, I'm bishop so and so and I'd be, and I, and I, and I, um, um, demand respect, you know. If, if I'm coming in, you know, I want the best seats, I want the, you know, finest of things. And, and, and this is what Jesus is saying, that, that beware of that, beware of that. And that was kind of a, in, in chapter twenty, a little review. So what we're gonna do tonight is we wanna go to Luke chapter twenty-one. And we're gonna, we're gonna start right there for tonight, Luke chapter twenty-one. And if somebody will list, um, let's see what, let's just do the first four verses and talk about this little, here a little bit. So if somebody will read chapter twenty-one, verse one through four.
While Jesus was in the temple, he watched the rich people dropping their gifts in their collection box, collection box. Then a poor widow came by and dropped in two small coins. "I tell you the truth," Jesus said, "this poor widow has given more than all the rest of them. For they have given a tiny part of their surplus, but she, poor as she is, has given everything she has."
Okay, alright, thank you. Our class, somebody gonna start discussion on that, what is Jesus talking about here? Because, you know, he sitting here looking and the rich people, they, you know, let's, if we talk money, you know, we'll kind of say, maybe they come in, I'm, I'm putting in thousand dollars. And then this widow come in and say, you know, probably didn't even say anything, just come in and had two pennies and drop in the collection. So what, what, what is Jesus talking about here?
I think that he sees that this woman is given from her heart and she just gave. Whereas the others are given based on their decision of what they want to give versus giving from the heart. You know, I'll give you, you know, I have a five hundred dollars, I'll just give you a hundred. They were thinking to me more of selfishness and what they are going to keep versus just, you know, not giving from the heart.
Okay. Alright, anyone else got something they wanna add?
Oh yeah, the, uh, the widow was, uh, I mean, goes back to, you know, give Caesar what is Caesar's and give God what is God. And she, she gave everything she had entrusted in God. And, uh, and the others were really doing it for each other. It really, it was a show and it wasn't about, their, their heart was far from God when they did it. Their heart was in pride and, and even competing with each other. And that, and, and God owns everything and, and everybody, so in that regard, it, it, it's not about that. He reads our hearts.
Okay. Alright, let, let me throw this in. Then let's, let's, let's throw this in for the sake of conversation. You got these, you know, rich putting in gifts into the temple treasury. What if they putting in fifteen percent or ten percent of their tithe? What are they putting in the tithe? How did that change this conversation?
Or do it? Said, what if they were putting in, giving it of their tithe?
Yes, what, what if what they put in was their tithe, was the tithe and that what they were putting in? How or would that change this conversation?
I don't know if it would change the conversation because it was, they were given out of abundance versus given out, like I said, from the heart or sacrificing what they had. They weren't, like the lady, she wasn't, uh, you know, she had, all she had was the two and she gave it all.
Okay.
And what they had was plenty, but they only gave what they thought was the tithe.
Right.
They were given out of their abundance.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, somebody else wanna add something?
Yes, they didn't give, uh, you know, they didn't, they did not, they, they had a surplus, but they just gave a little, you know, out of that surplus. But this woman, she cherished God and she gave more than all of them because she gave what, she gave all she had. All she had, she was a poor widow and she gave all she had. And then when she gave, she gave it with a heart, you know, a willingness, you know? And they didn't have that heart of willingness. And when you, when you, when you give, you got to be willing to do it and she was willing to do it to give all that she had. And they had a lot of money, but they only give, they gave her just a little bit of it.
Okay.
Right, she was given generously, they were given from abundance.
Right, absolutely.
Amen, amen, good. Okay, and, and I agree, and I agree. And, and, and so where I was going with that is, you know, I, I see Jesus here teaching and training beyond the tithe. Okay, and I, I'll explain what I mean by that. So here you got the rich, that's the given. So, and as was already said, you know, they may have thousands in the bank. You know, they got ten thousand, so here they're saying, okay, well, I'm coming here, you know, and I'm gonna give a thousand. That's ten percent of ten thousand, I'm gonna give a thousand. Okay, now, are you willing, you easily give that ten, that thousand because you got nine left?
Right.
Will you be willing to give the whole ten thousand? Now, you know, I, I know that I got nine thousand left, I can pay my bills off that nine thousand, I can eat off that nine thousand, I can do whatever off that nine thousand. Now this woman coming and she's giving everything. She, she's not thinking about what I'm gonna eat, she's not thinking about how I'm gonna take care of this and all that. You know, it's like she's putting it saying, okay, I'm gonna bring this to the storehouse and my dependence is gonna be on God.
Amen.
As if we're the, the rich are saying, well, I'm bringing some to the storehouse and my dependence is gonna be on what I got left.
Right, absolutely.
And so, when I say, I believe Jesus here is teaching beyond the tithe, what I mean by that is, you know, where in the New Testament, it says, give according to, I'm probably misquoted, but you know, as your heart, as you purpoing your heart to give, give. So with that, in, in the way I, I look at it is, you know, when we talk about the tithe, always say the tithe should always be your minimum that you give, you know? Because God may purpose in your heart to do beyond that. There might be certain things that, you know, a blessing that he wants you to have. And so now he's purposing in your heart and in your heart, it might be, I need to give fifty percent this time or I might even need to give a hundred percent because there's something that he wanna do, you know, within your life and he's, he's purpose of that in your heart. And if we get so stuck, well, I'm just gonna do tithe because I'm giving God ten percent and I got the other nine. I'm giving God ten percent and I got the other ninety. Well, I'm trying to depend on the ninety where God is saying, I don't want you to depend on the ninety, I want you to depend on me.
Right.
And so, you know, staying there, that's where I'm saying, I, I believe Jesus is kind of teaching beyond the tithe. Okay, yeah, the tithe is the baseline. You know, i- i- it's like when we talk about the Ten Commandments. The Ten Commandments is the baseline. Thou should not kill, you know, thou should not steal, thou should not have no God before me. That's the baseline and that's based off of the law. Now, when we move beyond the baseline or beyond the law, it's that I'm not gonna kill because I love you. I'm not gonna have no other God before him because I love him. And so, you know, the, your, your heart changes. And so, you know, as, as, as we move into, you know, as we move into, um, this good news and this doctrine that Jesus is teaching, you know, he's saying, you know, I'm bringing this to the storehouse, not because the Bible said bring your tithe, but because I love God. And I love what's gonna be done to take care of his people with this. And so, you know, i- i- it changes, you know, it changes the why, if you will, okay?
Can I say something?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yes, go ahead.
I, I, I just like to say something because I'm listening to what you're saying. And, and I'm listening to the part where she say, she give all that she had. She gave all what she had, she gave it from her heart, but she gave it to him even to the, to them because she knows where her storehouse is. And her storehouse is in God. Because she, God is the storehouse. And when we give from our heart, even though like say, right now on the daytime that we looking at our ties are often in our church down here on earth. But from our heart, we giving our ties to God. And when we give it to God, God is the one that gonna supply our every need because we have everything stored in him that we need. And the thing about it where sometimes we look at, I'm gonna say it like this. Sometimes we look at man, Lord, and we put stuff down here on earth in churches or whatever, say the tithe, the ten percent. And sometimes when we go through, sometimes the problem, and, and I know some, some, somebody have may felt this or may feel this sometimes. And when you're in trouble or when you have been through trouble and you look for your, where you put your tithe, sometimes they never help you. But the thing about it, God always got somebody to help you when you don't see where you're being put your stuff. But the thing about it, I'm, I'm telling you like this because I feel like, when you giving it to the, the Lord and the Lord opened up somebody else where you say you putting in the storehouse, he got another door open where you looking at window. But the thing about it, he the storehouse because he got everything even till you're here, even till you're delivered, even till you being born and say it again, you know what I'm saying? All that coming from the storehouse when you store it to the Lord and you give the Lord everything you got from your heart. And giving it from your heart and that's just how, that he gonna take care of you. Because that's where we're supposed to be, we be giving to the Lord, not to the, you know what I'm saying?
I got you.
So everything, it come from the, and go to the Lord, but you give it from your heart.
Right.
Amen.
And you know, with that, one of the things that you see is, is a lot of the prosperity preaching and, and teaching kind of have, you know, it gets your mind conditioned in thinking that, you know, I'm bringing my tithe or I'm bringing this money to the storehouse so that God can bless me the same way as I, I'm given. Well, the blessings might not come back in the form of money. Your blessing might come back in the form of good health. Your blessing might, you know, come back in, in some protection. And see, and here's the other thing that, 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 you know, we have to understand is there's a lot of spiritual protection that God gives us. You know, some things that we don't even see, we can't even, we don't even know about. Wherever he give us those protections and, 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 uh, and so, when, when we do this, as we see here, this widow, you know, it tells me that she's done, doing this in faith and knowing the fact that, you know, I'm bringing this and God's gonna take care of everything else. You know, she may have in mind that, you know, she have some type of need or, or she might be just, you know, I'm, I'm just bringing this to the storehouse.
It was a cheerful giver.
That's right.
You gotta be a cheerful giver. You know, you can't give your money in strain, you know, and struggle. She was cheerful because she gave all she had.
Yes. And, and so, and that tells me that, you know, it's like, I'm bringing it and I know God's gonna take care of me. I, you know, I'm a widow and it's probably, you know, this probably, and, and, and just think about this scenario. She was a widow. And so, if she was a widow, that means that there's, and you know, during how society was then, a, a widow, a woman, it was, it was, it was tough because it was more of a, a, a man's world, if you will. And so, and, and she may have come across this and she's saying, you know, I haven't had an opportunity to bring anything to the storehouse in a long time. I got this and I'm taking every bit of it. So, you know, it, it lets us know that she was putting her dependence on God.
Amen.
It's about like the lady that says, you know, back in, um, I think, what was it, book of, um, I'll say it, well, back when, um, prophet, uh, Elijah. And the lady said that, um, you know, they're gonna, she was gonna make the, the bread and her and her sons was gonna eat and then they're gonna die. You know, is, and, and then he come along and say, make me first. And so, it's kind of like, you know, I'm, I'm at this, I'm at the edge. What else can I do? Just trust the man of God. And in this case here, she's saying, I'm trusting, well, Jesus was there, so I'm trusting the man of God, I'm trusting the son of God. And whatever, whatever comes, comes, but I'm coming and I'm, and I'm putting this in. And I, and, and I, you know, and, and, and one thing I like about this story here is, he don't talk about any results. If she got blessed, if she just perished or whatever. Because, um, we kind of have to, or, or well, sometimes we get caught up in this thing of, I'm doing this for God so I can receive something. You see? I'm bringing this tithe, but I'm expecting a, a, a hundred-fold blessing. Well, we gotta get to the point where I'm bringing this out of love for God, that he can bless it and that somebody can be blessed from it and then walk away.
Amen.
And so, so, and that's, that's kind of what I see this, this, this widow woman in doing versus, you know, versus the rich. They pull out their bankroll and pull, and pull one off the top and drop it in. Okay?
And it showed that, it showed that she had faith in God. Yes. And she had, she had incredible faith in God. That's why she didn't really, she didn't mind giving all that she had. Because she had faith in God because she knew that God was the supplier, he's the supplier by every need. And her trust and dependence was on God, because she didn't really have enough to do anything with. So why not bring it to God? Because he's the multiplier. So she had great, she had great faith in God. And she was cheerful, I could just see her being cheerful, giving cheerfully. You know, and she has the church, when it's time to give to God, we got to have that cheerful spirit. You know, when we place our money in the hands of God, we know that he is the God that owns everything. He owns the ground, he own the grounds, he own the gold, he owns everything. He owns us. He owns, right. Right, so, hey, you know, we know, when we place it in this hand, it becomes much. When you put little on his hands, it becomes much.
That's right.
Right. Amen.
Amen.
Man, okay, amen, I, I enjoy this, enjoying this.
Yes.
Okay. Do anybody else have anything? Go ahead, go ahead.
I say, it makes you look at things a whole lot different in, in this lesson that coming up. Because it really lets you know that you're giving from your heart and but you're giving to God because, you know, you trusting in him. And that's what we supposed to, supposed to trust in him and leave everything to him. Because he's our supplier and, and when we don't even see our way, he already see us way. He already got the way we. So those are the thing that, that give from heart, give the truth to God because that's where the storehouse at, in God. And we get, we get it kind of twisted because we on earth, but in the same company that, take focus and look at God. That's where we getting all, everything that we got and everything we own, we getting it from him.
Yes, amen, amen.
But you know, teacher, a lot of people, you know, they give and a lot of them don't give out their heart. But, you know, a lot of people rather, you know, not get their give, but they wanna keep their money. They don't wanna give up their money because they believe, hell, I got to have my money for this and I can have money for that. But I would tell them to turn the, your dollar bill over and see what it says. It says, trust in God. It don't say trust in the money. So if you give the money, you know good and well that if you give the money, you gonna get it back. But you don't have to look for it back because you know, it don't have to be money like somebody said earlier. It could be, um, where you might be riding down the street and an accident might be happening. And you put your money in there just because of that, that was one of the forgiving right there, God protect you from getting hurt, harmed and dangerous. So sometimes we got to think about, when we give, we don't even think about where it's going at and then when it's gonna, just got to do what God said do. He said, give and give.
And he said.
And shall be given back, you press down, shaking together, running over. You know what I'm saying? So that's the case. If you got five hundred dollars and God tell you to put it all in, in the offering, you got a car payment and a lot bill to pay and all this to pay. He tell you to put it in there, well, that ain't God, that's the devil. No, it ain't. God told you to put it in there, so put it in. And you, I guarantee you, if that boy tell you to put that money in there, you'll get it back triple time. So, first thing we got to do. Don't love the money so much because I'm, I look on the back of the dollar saying, God, we trust. But people trust it more than do God.
That's right.
And I wanna, uh, preach this. I wanna say that sometimes we said that we are paying God.
No, you don't, can't pay.
People say they paying their tithes, you can't pay God.
That's right.
You give your tithe.
Yes, he is.
Give it to him, you don't pay God because you don't have, really have anything to pay him with. He owns everything and you can't pay him.
That's right.
So sometimes that, the little word like pay, you know, pay your tithes. We ought to give our tithes.
You give them.
Give our tithes and be glad to give it and willing to give it. You know, our trust, like my husband just said, your trust cannot be in your money. And that little widow woman, she only had a little bit, but her trust wasn't in her money. Her trust was in God. And you know, sometimes that's the hardest thing to depart from is your money. You know, people don't wanna depart from that dollar bill, you know? And we, you know, we wanna be a blessing to the kingdom of God. So when you give, you are blessing to the kingdom of God. So you have to, you have to look at it from God's point of view, not your point of view. You giving something, getting something, that's, that's not, that's unbiblical.
Right.
You know? Amen.
Amen. And, and so, I, you know, when we start thinking about what you were just saying, you know, we, we think about, uh, first of all, think about the parable about, um, you know, where he gave some five, some three or, and then some one. You know, you, you think about, um, when you were saying about, don't wanna, you know, sometimes we get where we don't wanna give God our tithes or give him money. It, it, what happens is we get like the one with the one. We don't want to put it out there, we wanna try to hold on to it, you know?
Amen, you right about that, teacher. You right about that, teacher.
But but two, but two are Chris on that. Even though that present, just like I say. It depend on how many gifts that God give you of talent. And then it depend on how you use all that talent to glorify God. And use it to 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 show God within you, so that other, it be a light to other people. That they can see God in you, that it lives in you, and you living in your life and going through it. And those talents that he gave you to use. And you begin to use those talent in a way that he wants you to use them. And if you use them well, just like I say, you try, if you give it to him, with that giving or doing what he supply on your life. Then he'll bless you with more and more. And and that's say sometimes, and people give from their heart. And feel and be, like I say, shaking up and overflowing with money back, or whatever they getting back. And they help, they never be sick or nothing, you know what I'm saying, might only have to pay a doctor bill. Might only have to pay no kind of bill, because God got the way open that they don't, they 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 still blessed, you know what I'm saying? Like I said, or or faith in him and supply and believing in him and trusting in him all the way, because. Like I say, he got the door open wide and he got everything, and he pouring all in, and and everything, like I say, everything belong to him to all, even to us. And he knows what we standing in there, and he know what to believe, and that's why he give us different thing, and they're different of talent in our life. To work from, to show the glory of him through by us, so people can see. And they be wanting the same, and then like I say, he teach us as we go through, even with the tithes and offering, even with the giving. He teach us, because I think each time you go through life, and when you will go through hard time, and when your thing, and when you begin to do thing, and God bless you. Even though sometime you might come for, he still teach you and motivate, so your mind be in your heart, and when you get based on doing it from your heart for God. Then you see thing work out even better for you, so this is this is a belief. And shall be eye open to everybody tonight.
Yeah, and basically, ob- obedient, i- i- and basically this being obedient to God. And what it does is it puts you in his favor. So you, you know, you you be in situations where people will say, I I, you know, I I don't know. I'm gonna do this for you, I don't know why, but there's something about you. You know, um, and 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 all of this is that you have in the favor of God, and people are blessing you because of that. But when you're disobedient, then, you know, you're not in God's favor, and, you know, and then you're wondering why. You know, I don't went to this doctor and paid him so much money and I, and I, you know, and I still feel bad. But see, being in God's favor, you know, his blessings come, he's taking care of you, he's protecting. But see, the biggest thing that we, um, got to realize also is. In the spirit realm, spiritually, God is protecting us, he's not allowing Satan to trick us. Um, you know, trick our minds, um, he's he's giving us favor there too, and protection.
Amen.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Uh, in chapter twenty-one, so let's read from verse, um, verse five down through verse eleven, if you will. Someone will.
Okay, five, sorry.
Yes, five through, uh, five through eleven, yes.
And some spake of the temple, how it was adorned with worldly stones and gifts, he said. As for these things which ye behold, the days will come in which. There shall not be one stone upon another, that shall not be thrown down. And they asked him, saying, master. But when shall these things be? And what signs will there be when these things shall come to pass? Continue.
Uh, yes, down through verse eleven.
Oh, eleven. And he said, take heed, that ye be not deceived. For many shall come in my name, saying, I am Christ. And the time draweth near, go ye not therefore after them. But when ye shall hear of wars and commotions, be not terrified, for these things must come. First come to pass, but the end is not by and by. Then he said unto them, nations shall rise against nation. And kingdom against kingdom. And great earthquakes shall be in diverse places. And famines, and pestilence, and fearful sights, and great signs shall there be from heaven.
Okay, alright, got it. Okay, class, um, someone want to start discussion on on those verses?
Talking about, he's talking about the end times, and he was talking about him that, um. He was talking about the temple and him and him, he himself was the temple. That was gonna be destroyed. So, and they really didn't understand that, but he was telling them about what's gonna come. And we have to be aware of what's coming, you know, in our nation, in our land, we got to be. Uh, you know, we have to be alert to what God is saying. The Bible talks about the past, the Bible talks about the present, and the Bible talks about the future. You know, and our Bible is our resource, our Bible is our life book. And we just can't read the Bible like it's just a storybook. In the Bible, that God is telling us, Jesus was telling us what was going to happen. And these things are going to come to pass. But he is warning, he is warning all people. That these things are going to come to pass, and we have to know that these things are going to come to pass. And we have to keep that in our heart, and we have to have faith in God, we don't have no fear. But we have to have faith in him and know what he says about certain situation that's coming. Uh, earthquakes, we seeing things like this happening right now in our world. You see, all types of things are happening, um, mudslides, I mean, earthquakes, uh. They're they're shooting up the power grids, and God is telling us, he's warning us. And our, the Bible is our, uh, information. He have, he's given us information in this, and we have to take the Bible that this is not just a book. But it's our book, it's our life book, and we got to hear what it's saying. So God warning us and telling us what we need to do in these particular times. So, and when we look around in our, in our nation today. We can see war, rumors of war, we can see earthquake, we can see famine, we can see the plagues, we can see these things. You know, and it's, it's not like they're not going to happen, they're going to happen. They happened in normal days, it happened in light days, and so shall it happen in our day. So we just have to be alert to what God is saying to us, you know, it takes it to heart. Be like Mary, the things that they told her about Jesus, she did what? She pondered those things in her heart. So I just want to say that.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you, thanks for that, amen, okay, someone else want to add something?
Uh, yeah. When it talks about earthquake in diverse places, uh. That would be a tsunami. And it talks about false Christ rising. And, uh. And it's been written in scripture, if if someone claims to be Christ. Out there in the desert or any other place, do not go there.
Right, amen.
So, uh, and and I don't know, it was like. Ten years ago or so, I was looking at National Geographic, and they are false Christ showing up in. Africa, in China, all these people claiming to be Christ. So it's nothing to, but it's something to be aware of, and it's a warning for if anybody claims to be Christ. Not to go there. But know that. Uh, Christ is, uh, real. And he is a jealous God. He does not like, uh, any gods before him, anyone claiming to be him. He gave up too much, he gave up everything for us. And, uh. He's trusting us. To, uh, open our hearts to him and to trust in him and everything. And what he said in this.
Okay, yeah. Alright, okay, so. Have you, you, y'all heard of what's called a principle of double reference, principle of double reference? And so, basically what that is, and if you notice, a lot of the prophecies and a lot of the teachings that Jesus do. You know, he's talking about some things, and what it is, double reference is, you know, okay, he's speaking, just, you know. This is some of the, when he's talking these things, some of these things are gonna happen, re- you know. Soon, some of these things are happening way out. And so that's what we find here, and, uh, and and really, this is, this is, it covers. Um, the remainder of this chapter, you know, but I just only, we only just read the eleven, because you know, it's a lot of reading. One time, like that, but so what's happening is, um, um. Here, Jesus, you know, they're, 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 uh, amazed at this temple. And so let's, let's stop and think about this amazement. You know, this temple was, um, instructed on how to be built by God. And, um, you know, it it was beautiful, you know, it was, it was huge. And there was gold and all of that there, and so, um, when we think about during this time. Um, you know, they probably was amazed and 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 saying, oh, it's so beautiful and all this, and Jesus let them know. You know, okay, don't be so amazed about this, because, you know, it's gonna be destroyed. And which, you know, um. Right, and it it's symbolic, because you know, Jesus did make a reference that, you know, you destroy this temple in three days, I'll raise it back up. They misunderstood, and now, when we look at this actual temple here, that they were amazed about. It actually gotten destroyed. And the, what was it, the Babylon, the Romans, they they ravished it. Turned over every stone, because they were trying to steal all the gold, and and so, um.
It was destroyed by the Babylonians.
Babylonians.
Yeah.
And and they ravaged it, because they were trying to steal all the gold. So, is that, and that's where me, Jesus said, not a stone gonna be left on, left. And so, um, and then the other thing too is, and we really didn't read this far, but you know, it goes to talk about. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll get that, I wouldn't, we read that and talk about, so, so here, you know, Jesus explaining this. And then, but he goes on to, um, give this warning. Because he says, watch out that you are not deceived.
Right.
Now. What, where Jesus is going with this? You know, don't get so caught up with all this material stuff, you just make sure you don't get deceived. People, people gonna come and they gonna say, I am, you know, um, um, you know, I I'm the Christ, and the end is coming. You know, people gonna come with that. But, and so, you know, don't get so caught up in the glamour. You know, one, one thing that kind of come to me on this is, you know, if, um. How the mindset of people is, you know, you got someone coming, you know, um, and. Uh, you know, they coming with, they say they come with God's word. You know, a lot of times, we tend to wanna cling to that when that's wearing the fancy robe than we would for them that's. You know, might not have such fancy thing, saying that they proclaiming the word of God. You know, sometime we get caught up in the glamour of things, and 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 even with God's word. We get caught up in the glamour of things, and so that's why we so quick to want to go name and claim it. Um, you know, and 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 I'm not saying that it doesn't work. What I'm saying is, that's not what God's word is for, and, you know, as we just talked about in the widow, that's not what it's for. Um, you know, we should want to be closer to God, because we want to, we love him. And we want to live forever with him, and so here, you know, um, I see here Jesus saying, you, you know. You gonna hear wars, you know?
Right.
We hear wars today, we, all these things he said, and 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 it's already been said, we hear of all these things. And notice here, he said, nations shall rise against nation, and kingdom against kingdom. When we see nation against nation, and kingdom against kingdom, what's the difference between nation and kingdom? So, the way I see it as, you know, nation against nation would be like, you know, United States versus, uh, Russia. And when you start thinking kingdom versus kingdom, and you was talking about the principle of democracy versus the principle of communism. Or the principle of, uh, us, uh, you know, um, you know, some of the other ways of doing things. And just like the principle of the kingdom of God versus the kingdom of Satan, or the kingdom of the world. Where the kingdom of God is based upon love and treating everybody, you know, um, with love and with respect. And the saying that the person comes first, everything else last. As the kingdom of world saying, riches and my well-being come first, and everything else comes second. And so, you know, you you're, you're looking at, um, these principles, and they battling against each other. And, um, you know, great earthquakes, famines, pests, we seeing all these things. But notice where he says. And fearful events, uh, and great signs from heaven. So, what I, with that, that tells me that he done, you know. He done kind of floated away years in advance to start dealing with. Um, um, the tribulation. Because remember when we studied Revelation, and we got into the seals and all that, you know, um, and we talked about how. Once, um, after that last church, when, um, and also when John said, um. What was it, heard a voice come up here, um, that, that was in reference to the resurrection. And we know the resurrection would take place before the tribulation happens. And so, when we're looking at this, and and we saw the the seals, and and when. John talked about the different seals being open, and the different things that was happening here on earth. That was from a spiritual perspective, that was what John was seeing was what was in the spirit realm. Now, this is what Jesus is talking about, is what people that's on this earth gonna see from a physical perspective. See, they're not gonna see the angels standing in the water and the angel doing this, what they gonna see is the result of that. Okay, and so here, that tells me, you know, right here where he says, fearful events and great signs from heaven. This is the, um, God unleashing the tribulation, he unleashing his, his, um, wrath upon the disobedient, on the earth. And and and, um, with all these things happening here, so Jesus had went from, you know, kind of speaking of some things that's gonna. You know, that that that's happening, and the things for you to be aware of, and he went on out there. Now, the one thing we keep in mind is, when it comes to God, time isn't anything. Time only matters to us, because we are limited, when we live it on this earth, we, you know, it's limited. Our time is limited, so time only matter to us, it doesn't matter with God, God's not gonna die. You know, God's not gonna end, it's gonna be continual, so time only matters to us. And so, and 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 I say that to say, you know, with Jesus speaking, these are the things that are gonna happen. But for us, you know. It's a timeline for us, you know, where he's telling, um, and probably should read a little bit more, but you know, like, um. How he's talking about all these events and in verse twelve, he goes on and say, but before all of this. Set in timeline, they will seize you and persecute you. They will hand you over to synagogues and put you in prison. And you will be brought before kings and governors and all on account of my name. And we know that all of the disciples went through this, what Jesus is telling them, you know, his disciples that um remain disciples.
Right.
They went through all of this, what he's telling them. And he says, so you will bear testimony and and so you will bear testimony to me. And so, you know, when we. Let me read some more, in fourteen, he said, but make up your mind not to worry beforehand. How you would defend yourselves, for I will give you your words and wisdom. That none of your adversaries will be able to resist or contradict. And notice, y'all, y'all remember the story of, uh, you remember the story, well, one of the stories, the story of Steve? And then also um Peter and John, you know, when um they were talking about how they were. They, they were um brought him up before the council. And when Peter spoke, they were like, where did he get all this from? Cause you know, they were like, you know, they, they looked like they were unwise men and all this. That was an example right there. Where they allowed the Holy Spirit to speak through them and Jesus gave them the words and they spoke. And so all of this was a testimony to Jesus. And so, you know, when we look at these things, um, it's an example of what God can do and what he will do. And so as we see how he handled Peter and John, it should give us encouragement. On when we're caught up in these situations, when it's time for us to speak up for Christ. Okay? And so here, Jesus is getting a warning, these, these things are gonna happen. You know, he said, for I will give you words and uh and wisdom. That none of your adversaries will be able to resist or contradict. Now, I I wanna touch on that a little bit more too. When you talk about the wisdom from God, it is beyond our understanding. You know, uh, one of the things, you know, if we go back to the example, or 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 go back to the story of Solomon. When the, you know, talked about the two ladies had uh each have a child, had a baby. And one child died in the night in the, you know, the one with the dead child went and switched them out.
Yeah, she's, one, one lady slept on her baby and killed her baby. He was saying the other baby was her baby, but it really wasn't.
That's right. How King Solomon was like, okay, well, bring me the living child. Cut the head off the living child and you know, the both would be dead. Then the lady come up and say, no, 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 it's her child, she can have it. Well, kings, you know, that wisdom was to know that the mama's gonna do whatever she had to do to protect her child. When you think about it from a world's perspective, that don't make sense, you know, why are you gonna do that for? Well, he, wisdom was, is that you're not gonna have to do it. You just bring up the act of doing it and watch the response. And so um here is like this, where Jesus saying, you in these situations depend on me. I'm gonna give you the wisdom so you can see and understand what you need to understand, but not only you, but those that are coming against you. They won't be able to stand against you. And um, you know, is he going to say, you know, this is your testimony? This, you, you will bear testimony to me. And so now in bearing testimony to him, he's not talking about. We're, you know, we're, we're testifying to him. He's talking about our works and our reactions and our actions is being a testimony to him. And um. And 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 he goes, he goes on, he goes on to say, um. You will be betrayed even by parents, brothers and sisters, relatives and friends, and they will put you to death. Everyone will hate you because of me. But not a hair of your head will perish. Stand firm and you will win life. So here, you know, when Jesus saying not a hair of your head will perish, he's talking eternal. He's talking eternal, you know, um, um, you receive an eternal life versus eternal damnation. Return, i- i- is what he referring to here. Um, and then, you know, as he goes on and says, stand firm and you will win life. Okay? You know, he's talking about life, life more abundantly, he's talking about um, um, life eternal. Alright, um, anybody wanna add something on, on those verses for?
Now, when you said about the kingdom. Now, the kingdom, the kingdom is a government, right? The kingdom is a government and the two kingdoms is the kingdom of darkness, then the kingdom of God.
That's, that's right, that's a comparison, person, kingdom of God, kingdom of darkness. Um, and also, you know, cause when we talk, we're talking kingdom, i- i- is, is um. Kind of the difference of kingdom and nation, what I see is more of a kingdom or more of a principle or a way of doing things. You know, if, if we think about, um, say like today. Um, you got like dealing with communism, you're dealing with democracy. A lot of people wanna be a part of democracy because democracy, you know, supposedly people have freedoms. So they love that principle. And then, um, you know, where communism is a little more, um, you don't have that freedom. And so that's, that's more of an earthly comparison. But you know, when we start talking spiritually, like you saying, the kingdom of God, the kingdom of darkness, um, those are kingdoms. And 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 really, those two kingdoms are the kingdoms that really matter. Because if we're not in the kingdom of God. We're in the kingdom of darkness. And 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 it's best to be in the kingdom of God. And that's doing the things and the way God wants us to do them. Through Jesus Christ, he wants us to do everything through love. And that's why, you know, John three sixteen said, God so loved the world, gave his only begotten son. And so what he's asking is that we so love him. That, you know, we, we go and give our last two pennies, are we, you know, we, we, we sacrifice ourselves to go out there to lift up some bowed down heads. You know, to, to bring comfort to, um, you know, those that are um experiencing hardship. And we do it based upon love, you know? You know, one of the things that, that Paul talks about, he talks about, um, it's kind of like the difference between uh grace and the law. You know, he was saying, if you're gonna, you know, um, cause you know, back then when Paul was on earth. Um, a lot of the Jews, they were still trying to stick to, you know, that, but they wanna stick to the law when the law was convenient. And then they wanna stick to um grace when grace was convenient. And he goes on to say, if you're gonna live by law law, you gotta live by the whole law. And if you're gonna live by grace, you gotta live by the whole grace. So, you know, if, if I want God to have grace and mercy on me, then I should have some grace and mercy on you. Um, and you, you know, basically with that, and so, um. You know, these are the things that, that Jesus trying to instill, because it was unpopular. Um, it was unpopular to put somebody in front of you, you know, it's, 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 it's. Um, we think about the Good Samaritan. It was unpopular for you to, you know, being a rich person, to risk your life to help some, a stranger like that. You know, why are you going down in this ravine to help him? This might be a trap, you know? And so, um, he, he, the, the, you know, the um, the kingdom of heaven, God's way of doing things. It was uncommon, you know? It's hard to understand, well, you know, well, you know, it don't make any sense, if you will. But with the Holy Spirit. Um, and he goes on teaching in verse twenty five and says, uh, there will be signs in the sun. Moon and stars on the earth, nation will be, will be in anguish and perplexity. At the roaring and tossing of the sea, people will faint from terror. Hold on, I think I. Let's back up, let's back up, let's back up. Uh, verse twenty, he says, when you see Jerusalem being surrounded by armies. You will know that its desolation is near. Then let those who are in Judea flee to the mountains, let those in the city get out. Let those in the country not enter the city. For this is the time of punishment and fulfillment of all that has been written. How dreadful it will be in those days for pregnant women and nursing mothers. There will be great distress in the land and wrath against his people. They will fall by the sword and will be taken as prisoners to all the nations. Jerusalem will be trampled on by Gentiles until the times of the Gentiles are fulfilled. Okay, so here, um, here is, is, is another one of those things where I see that Jesus is, 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 is talking. Um, you know, this is coming, but you know, it's, you know, part of this is near time, but part of this is way out. So, you know, um, during, after Jesus' resurrection. Um, you know, I think, you know, it was, um, you know, maybe like less than a hundred years later. When Jerusalem um was um actually taken captive. And one of the things that, you know, I was looking at and and they were saying is that during that time. There was like a, um, a million, you know, like one point one million Jews that actually were, was persecuted. And you know, there, there was some that was taken captive out of the city of Jerusalem, you know, until that there was none left. And we all know that Israel was gone and it's been what, nineteen or the twentieth century? The nineteen hundreds, um, actually like what, say, wasn't it seventies? When Israel was actually recognized as another nation. And you know, because they were, uh, you know, it was the, um, the, actually the Brit, Britons that had, um. Captured them at that time or are up to that time, and they became another nation, became a nation again. And so here, you know, Jesus referencing to that. But, um, um. When we move beyond that, we all also know that, um. During the time of tribulation, that Jesus is gonna come. And he's going to um rule for a thousand years, is it like a thousand year? Where Jesus will come and rule. And then, you know, and and we, we, we learned in Revelations. That nations are gonna come together and they're gonna try to come um and 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 fight Jerusalem with Jesus being the ruler. And this is when we start talking about Armageddon. And so, you know, Jesus, he's, he's talking about all of these things and he's letting them know, all of this is gonna happen. You know, because see, when the actual end is coming, is gonna be when, um, we get to Revelation twenty one. When he says, God is gonna wipe away all our tears. And then he starts talking about the new heaven and the new earth and the new Jerusalem. You know, the, that's when the end as we know it is gonna take place. Um, and so here, Jesus letting them know, all these things are gonna happen, but the end is not yet, it's not yet come. And so. Um. And y'all, you know. The Jews, they, they really have it rough, you know, um, because when you think about it, it's like. It's like, they're trying to be wiped off the earth. You know, even with the, um, you know, um, in, in, in the nineteen thirties. With the situation over in Germany, you know, i- it was, um, um, the Jews were the primary target. Um, with that. And so, you know, all this right here we find in the Bible about um things that's coming against them, that has come against them. And see, and the bottom line is, they were God's chosen people to be an example to the world. But they got caught up in disobedience and and all these things. And so what it does is, it gives an example and show, you know, that, 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 that God is for real. And he means what he says. You know, and 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 that's the thing that we have to be very careful about, um, you know, with us. Um, in, in listening to, um, and obeying God. Now, the one thing about that, that he did not allow to happen, he did not allow them to be wiped off the earth. He always came to their rescue at the appropriate times.
Amen.
Okay? And even he, and then he start talking about the signs in the, you know, the sun, the moon and stars on, on the earth. Nation will be again, will, will be in anguish and perplexity at the roaring and tossing of the sea. People will faint from terror, apprehensive of what is coming on the world. For the heavenly bodies will be shaken. Um, heavenly bodies, that's, you know, you're talking about, uh, like that's, that's the moon, the stars and all this. Um, heavenly bodies will be shaken, at that time, they will see the Son of Man coming in a cloud with power and great glory. When these things begin to take place, stand up and lift up your heads. Because your redemption is drawing near now. Jesus is talking to, he's talking to his disciples and all of them. But see, it wasn't gonna be them that get to see all of this. This is why this is in the Bible, because it's for us. But the other thing was, Jesus is leaving the, um, he's, he, he, or here it is, is. He don't want them to think or us to think that, oh, it's gonna be a thousand years before that happened. It always gotta be, this can happen tomorrow, or this can happen in the next second. We got, that's the mindset where we always have to be, this can happen, you know, before I get the next word out of my mouth, this can happen. We gotta be prepared. And so. That's what we, you know, that's, we have to be, we always have to be mindful of that. You know, and so that's why we see, um, you know, you hear these things that's happening, all these things that's going on. And one problem with our times right now is the fact. That we have more knowledge than they did then. And for example, when we look at when Jesus talking about in verse twenty five, there will be signs in the sun, moon and stars. Okay, can you, do, do y'all remember? Um. A few years ago, when the um solar, yeah, solar eclipse happened in this area. You know, it, it kind of got dusk, and where we are, it kind of got dusk. But you know, if you went further, like, I think, like around Charleston, it got a little darker.
Right, I remember, and people was going to Charleston to see the eclipse.
Yes, ma'am.
I remember.
So just imagine. Alright, so, and we knew what it was, we knew that the, the earth was passing between, oh, no, the moon was passing between the earth and the sun. So the moon was casting a shadow on the earth, we knew that, right? Think about these people that didn't know what was going on. It brought fear, it brings fear, because they said, whoa, the sun, it got dark in daytime, God must be mad. Well, and you know, and they trying to flock away from that, and we're flocking to it because our knowledge, our wisdom. Is making us, is pushing us away from, uh, you know, the fear of God. Because the things that you understand, you don't fear. And so when Jesus is saying all this right here, and you know, they have a solar eclipse or they have a lunar eclipse. You know, or even if they seen a shooting star, or what we call the shooting star, we know it's an asteroid flying through their atmosphere, but they didn't know that. So they see stuff like that and it brings that fear, oh, God is trying to tell us something. You know, even, you know, when I was growing up in a thunderstorm pain, you know, everything was quiet, everything was off. Well, today, well, you know, as we learn and understand, and we see today, it's just. and we see today, it's just, you just continue on what you were doing, just make sure you, you know, don't get hit by lightning. Because the, you know, we have an understanding of what's actually going on. And so it's no longer, God is doing his work, you know? And so, what happens is, when things like that happen, instead of us thinking about God and, and referencing God in these things, we're going to our knowledge of this is happening because of this.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so they don't have no more fear.
Amen.
Yes. And so, you know, and Jesus is putting all this in here. So what, what, where I'm going with that is, because we have all this wisdom and, and, and we know all this is going on, this is what's happening, we're gonna miss the warnings that he's giving us. And we're gonna be caught up doing, you know, the things that we've been doing, and here he is. And, you know, it, 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 and we be get caught up by like, you know, the song. You know, where they talk about the, the woman, she was pretty. Well, she kept doing makeup, facelift and all that, so she'd stay pretty. And when it was time for her to die, she was like, well, God, why you didn't give me a warning? I gave you a warning, you know? And so, that'd be the same thing here, I'm giving you warnings, but you're trying to ignore the warnings because, you know, of your earthly knowledge. And so, we have to be very careful.
Amen.
And, and, and live the way, you know, God has asked us to. Okay.
That, that's the truth. Now, now Chris, now, you, you said the right thing in my foot too, because it just like, like you say, everybody changed from what it used to be. We used to have fear in our heart too, with stuff happening around us coming up. We had fear, we felt like Jesus was coming back, and nowadays you tell people about Jesus coming back, they say, well, it been so, so years, he ain't come yet, and so they, they feel, they feel like they still got that he ain't coming back, you know what I'm saying? But, but like you say, if you pay attention to everything around you and start looking at the sun and, and, and looking at your day, early rise of the morning, and the late setting of the afternoon, and sometimes even in the night, if you look up in the sky, or even in the daytime, i- it's gonna be a change up in that universe up there. And like you say, the signs and the one coming, he already showing us signs.
Yes.
Showing up, but the, we, we, as some people not understand those signs that he's sending, because we have to study his word to know that sign.
That's true. Amen.
When we study where the sign, you'll see the warning, even though if you see the warning, he gonna trip. Now, I'm telling you, if you stay focused in God and praying every day for him to show you stuff, and he, he teach you as he show you, and he lets you know, and when sometime I could look at, look at up in the universe and I see something different, and I, my eyes will catch it, and I be wondering, you know, wonder why the, 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 the moon or the, or the sky moving like that? I say, it look kinda unusual for to be looking like that this time of the day, you know what I'm saying? And then I, 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 my mind will go back, he say we'll see signs and wonders, you know? He gonna show us signs, you know what I'm saying? And so we don't want nothing, and I ask the Lord, whatever it is, Lord, please reveal it to me, you know what I'm saying? Because I don't know, and then sometime I wait, and then sometime like I said, sometime even when something coming along, it's just, you know, you, you gonna hurt by it, but then the thing about it, you never understand it, until you go back to his word and begin to read, and then you say that was a sign. You know, so he showing us signs, and sometimes we not even paying attention and, and observing around, or to see the sign.
Amen. That's right. That's why it's so important, you know, to don't depend on other people for, um, for understanding of the word of God, and I know God give us people to help us in the word, but we are responsible for getting in the word and reading the word and asking the Holy Spirit to, um, unveil the word of God to us. You know, because a lot of times you can't depend on, even we have pastors, we have pastors, we have leaders, but you, you are responsible for your growth in Christ. You know, and you just pick up your Bible when you come to church. You know, you got, you got to study your word so you can be aware of what's going on around us, you know? Because God did just put us in a church just to be a, you know, just to be in the church. But there's responsibility, there's things that we have to do too, you know, for ourselves. You know, so we can be aware of what the enemy is doing and the signs that is coming, you know, so we can be prepared to do whatever God tell us to do, and he want us prepared. So you can't depend on other, other folks. Get, your Bible is your book, your life book, so you have to get in your book, read your book, and your book will tell you what you need to know. Cause he have, he have given us everything that we need to know in the word of God.
Yes, amen.
You know, we just have to, uh, do what we need to do as kingdom citizens, you know? We're, we're, we're citizens of the kingdom of God. And we have to stay in close proximity with, with Christ, through the Holy Spirit, reading our Bibles, you know? You're getting like the teacher said, getting close to God, knowing what God is saying, and not just going in your Bible and just reading it like it's an ordinary book. This book is telling us about things that is headed our way. And God wants us to be prepared for this, you know, because a lot of people are not gonna be prepared for what's coming. And we can see it now, we can see the, you know, the commotion, we can see the, you know, people are in a uproar because they don't understand what's going on. Because there was a shift that took place. You know, a, a this earth shift, there was a shift that took place, you know, in, in, in the world. And, and that, that what we are used to is not here anymore. So we have, we have to stay in our, stay in our Bibles, read your Bible. That's your source of information, not Facebook, not Google, not all that other stuff, your Bible. It's your info, it's your info.
Amen.
And I, and I feel like that shift that's coming, where it say the shaking, that's the shaking of the earth. The foundation that we just combined by. The earth already started, you see where earthquakes and stuff coming in, where it's okay, it's already, like I say, the sign coming, it's coming in, in through the earth.
Right. Amen.
And, and I was, I, I was reading there, like, and, and first king were Elise and, uh, Elijah, and, uh, how that he was sitting up there on the mountains, and the kings keep sending, one, you know, a man sending a, a, a prophet up there and fifty, fifty horsemen up there to him, and tell him to come down. But he saw it there anyway, and he, and the far, and he prayed, and the far consumed them, each one of them. It, it was three men that went up there, but one, he went and kneeled and prayed. And he listened to him. And see, that's, that's like God, he show us stuff. And, and if you don't mind to pay attention to it and look at it the way that he said, you'll skip it every time. You'll skip it every time. And I've been reading that, it's been for about, about three weeks. And I had first lost the chapter, I have to tell you that. I, I had first lost the chapter and, and I couldn't find it. And I prayed and I asked God, and something other told me to get a pencil and get the two pieces of paper and fold it and put it in the Bible. And I folded that paper and I put it into my Bible. And the next morning I got up to read that Bible, I was red on the page. I said, Lord, tears come falling down my face. I said, Lord, I thank you. I said, Carl, I've been looking for this, and it wasn't the time for me to leave. But I, I read it, that was from Monday up until now. And I, and it began to speak somewhere in my head. And so I thank God for that, and getting back to, uh, the signs and the wonders. Uh, when that hurricane come, I don't know whether y'all paid attention or not, but after it left, you looked at them trees, them trees looked like they were sick. They looked like they'd been beaten so bad, anywhere you went, you saw the beating on them trees. And I feel like God was trying to tell us something then. I felt like God was letting us know at that time, he could have took us then, but he gave us another chance. And, um, these are things that we have to pay attention to. Foreign country, you start talking to all these earthquakes, these mudslides, all these stuff, hunger peoples over there, these things, God is showing you signs now and wonders. You just got to look at, you got to look at what God done. And as you not pay attention, then you skip it. And I see it all the time because I'm always open ears to listen to what's another God say. I live up here and I listen, I listen and I try to read during the day. And so, I had called Garnell and I told Garnell about the chapter, and which I tell y'all, help me. Because when I did the reading, I, I keep kinda going through, I'm not a good reader now, but God, I'm not a good reader, but I go, you know, keep going through, and then I be forgot. And the truth is the truth, ain't no need me denying about, cause y'all can't get me into heaven, only God. And God knows my heart, and I'm, I'm, I'm tempted to go to heaven. Um, I'm, I'm trying my best to really go to heaven. And, uh, I mess up sometimes, and I don't mind submitting to what my wrongness is. And that's why I ask y'all for y'all prayers and help, to help me to get there. Because we none can't get there by ourselves, we got to have some help along the way. Because, why? It's because your encouragement, your prayer, sometime I feel like I'm down, you could push me a little bit further.
Amen.
Cause I'm trying to beat up on yourself because you mess up, just like I told you, I messed up about that chapter. And something else say it wasn't right for me to not define that chapter, and, and my heart, I had a hunt, and hunt, and hunt, and I kept gliddin', gliddin', gliddin' over, over and over and over. And God gave it to me, man, my heart felt like it crawled it up on my head and tears been coming down my face at five o'clock in the morning. Five o'clock in the morning, I tried to be up, say my little prayer, say my song, do something other good for God. I tried to be up that time, do something good for God. And, uh, and I said, I think that I'm crazy, I said, but you know, I, I feel like early in the morning, it's the time to get up, to do something good for God, while your mind is clear. And so that's what I do. And so, these are things, and then I, I trying to get online, I caught the tail end, but thank the Lord I'm here. But, uh, I didn't try to understand, but I heard him talking about grace. Grace and mercy, we need that, that is the thing that lead us to, that is the thing that guide us and carry us. If we don't walk into that grace and mercy, I don't know where we will be, because God has mercy on us. And he gave us hope, to keep on walking through with, and those are the two things that we need to have with us at all time. All time. Mm-hmm. But I got in, see you were talking on the end of, and I don't like jumping in because this is your Bible discussion. And I know it right for all to talk.
You get to talk.
It, it right for us to give a point, you know? But I thank God, I thank God that I got in.
Yes.
At that particular time, because grace and mercy is carrying me. And all I could do is tell you in that question, it's up to you to adapt. If you don't mind to adapt to what the Bible say, then you gonna be lost. And God gonna be here with the rapture, and you gonna be lost because you didn't adapt. And you got to adapt in, and, and when I mean adapt in, that mean that you said, Lord, forgive me for all that I have done. And Lord, I'm, I'm putting, I'm putting off the old and I'm putting on the new. And I'mma walk in the newness now because I understand. And now, I begin to walk truly towards you. That's what we have to do. And when we do that and meaning and walk in the truth, then God could come and clean us and heal us now. And we stop being stiff naked. That's what God want us to do. We, we stubborn people, we, we real stubborn, we wanna have our way. But God gonna make it so that you gonna listen to his way. And his way is the only way you gonna get that way.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. So that's what I had to say.
Amen. Thank you for that.
Amen, man.
Okay. All right. Okay, with that, we're, we're going to, um, um, stop there. And we'll pick up on this on, 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 on next Wednesday night. Um, thank everybody for, for being on, thank you for your comments, um, um, that's how we all grow, because we all share.
That's right, man.
And at this time, Elder Saroy, turn it over to you.
Well, we wanna thank you, Brother Teacher, for a wonderful, wonderful lesson in how you presided. And wanna thank everybody for all the comments and the participation and sharing of the word. So now at this time, if there's any prayer requests, bring them forth.
I would like to say to pray for my cousin, her name is, uh, Batia Campbell. And, and my friend, her name is Sherry, she's dealing with stage four cancer. And Batia is dealing with paralysis over her whole body.
God save her.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, eh.
Any more? Or a prayer?
Yeah.
Appreciate long history.
I'd like for you to pray for my family. And when I say my families, that mean all of us, because we all are brother and sister in Christ. And God want us to speak up for all of us, not just for yourself all the time. It's for all of us, because we all need to grow in Christ. And so, I ask y'all to pray much for my families. And, you know, pray that we get strong and pray that God will help us to see his way, not our way. And, uh, these are things that we need to pray on and ask, asking God to help us to, you know, to do stuff for our peoples that one time they was in trials, in trials. And when they was in trial, in, in, in little abundance, they pray for one another. And we have to pray for one another like that. And so, that's what we need to do for us, for, for us. Is to pray, let, let this love that God talking about be for all of us, the same love that he loved at us with. That's why the main thing is, let it show that we love them just like we love ourselves, in this family. Because we owe our brothers and sisters due by Christ, he made us.
Amen. Amen.
Anybody else?
Um, I wanna, um, put, um, continued prayers for my coworker's daughter, Kelly Grace. Um, prayers for Pastor and Miss Sophia in their, um, travels. And also, um, my family. And also, um, Rosa, continued prayers for her brother.
Is that it? Heavenly Father, first of all, we wanna say thanks. Heavenly Father, first of all, we wanna say thank you. Thank you, Father, because you've been so good to us, you've kept us, Father, from all hurt and all danger, Father. Father, we wanna say thank you, Father. Want to ask you to bless and keep our pastor in his action. Bless our teacher tonight and all that's on this call. Thank you for the understanding of this lesson, Lord. We bring all petitions before the throne, knowing that you have all power in your hand, Father. You see the need, so we leave it before you, Father, and we say thank you, Father. Now to him who was able to keep us from falling, keep us and guide us and Jesus name we pray. Amen.
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 Good night, y'all, y'all have a blessed night. Thank y'all for being on the call.